Can you hear us now?
I think you should do it every time you don't say anything.
Um, I will say Nicole looks frozen on my end.
She is not online. I can see her blinking.
Yeah, she's just poised.
Hearing, just heard from an audience member that they can hear now. So we're good to go.
Nicole, can you hear us? Nicole? I don't think she can hear us. Nicole, can you hear us?
Um, I'm gonna shoot her a text right now. Just turn up for volume. Um, I am hearing from other council or audience numbers that they can't hear.
Jordan, when we speak, do you want us to unmute our Zoom?
Okay.
You're unmuted right now.
Yeah, she still can't hear us.
Sorry, y'all. I apologize for the technical difficulties. We are gonna work to get writer on board with audio since that will constitute a quorum for tonight. Try the faithful method of logging off and logging back on and hopefully helping Nicole's audio.
I'm seeing two Commissioner Byers.
Lucky you. Change line to Christina. Can you?
But I could do that. I don't wanna miss.
All right, we're, let's go ahead and give Councilor Greider a few more minutes here. Shut her down right here. Okay, testing. Nicole, are you able to hear us now? All right, testing sound. Okay, great. Nicole can hear us. Great, and just to do one last technical check, Commissioner Greider, if you want to go ahead and unmute and see if your sound works on your end.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it worked, but I accidentally hit new on you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect. Okay, thank you everyone for that patience. Oh, I should have had two of those coconut chews.
That was the hardest part of the meeting, don't worry.
Perfect. Uh, Commissioner Perimiller, if you don't mind, let's just go ahead and start from the top.
Yeah.
And I'll do roll call.
Uh, okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, it is six eleven and I'm calling the Talent Urban Renewal Agency General Meeting of August eighth to order. Roll call, please.
Great. Commissioner Byers, here. Commissioner Pestejo is absent. Commissioner Greider?
Here.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Panamara?
Here.
Commissioner Clark is absent. Uh, Mayor Ayers Flood or Chair Ayers Flood is absent. And Commissioner Perry Miller, here. Great. Uh, Michelle, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, so item number two on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda items. Um, staff, do we have any speaker request forms or anyone in the audience? Would you like to speak to a non-agenda item?
And Grisha, we have no speaker request forms.
Excellent. Okay, so moving on, um, item number three is the consent calendar. And that is just three point one and three point two, which are the financials from May and June.
Yes.
Okay, great. Have folks had a chance to review the financials?
I did not.
Okay.
We can push those next meeting. They were accidentally not included in the packet and sent via email. So we'll add those next meeting. Great. This afternoon. Oh, we didn't catch the error till then.
Thank you, Jordan. So we'll move that to the September meeting. Moving along very quickly, item number four is items from the Executive Director. Um, item four point one is the revitalization grant application. Staff report.
Great, thank you. Um, so for folks that know, we have a special grant for up to fifteen thousand dollars per property for businesses and commercial property owners. And the intent of this grant is help to, um, for local businesses and commercial properties to improve, uh, the visibility of their business, to increase access and or to recover from impacts of the Almeida fire. Um, currently, we have eighty-five thousand dollars in grant funds that we have available to disperse through this grant program. We have received five different applications. Um, for these grants, those applications is the high level summary are from osteopathic healthcare who are looking to do some, uh, beautiful landscaping after losing their landscaping in the Almeida fire. The talent club that is looking to install a new patio, new fence and shade sales to help bring folks outside their venue. Art Bop Beer Company, um, they are looking to do an art mural along their fence as well as to do a patio refresh and recent addition that didn't make it into your packets, add on a sign because theirs got run over this week. Um, so they're asking for a little additional for a sign. This gets in final, who's looking to put up a permanent sign. They've been having a temporary one since they lost theirs to the fire. And then Sweet Feet Station, which is looking to do some improvements to the outdoors of the building to make it more accessible, more shady and more bike friendly. Um, we do have representatives from all the businesses here. Um, before we open up for any questions from them, I do wanna highlight that the requested amount column on the chart in front of you is what is being asked for by businesses. The column about staff recommendations, this is our recommendation, uh, based off an up to amount to allow for flexible things such as permits, et cetera, that may have not been, uh, factored into the cost. And with that, I will open up to any questions you all might have for me or any specific, uh, businesses who are here tonight.
Do we wanna go through these one by one? Do we want to, um, board member buyers? Well, I have a question, but if you wanna settle on across us first, that's fine. I mean, what's the consensus? One by one?
I, I think I'd like to go through them one by one.
Okay. Um, I can't see. My question is for the first one. Member writer. Okay, um, let's go through them one by one. Member buyers? Um, I'm just, I'm assuming that the thirty thousand dollar recommendation is because there are two tax lots that are being landscaped and we're allocating fifteen thousand per tax lot essentially.
Yeah. Correct. So per grant terms, the grant eligibility is per tax lot. Um, osteopathic healthcare exists on two separate tax lots.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the total landscaping, uh, bill they're looking at is around forty thousand dollars. And so they're asking for thirty thousand dollars of grant to help support the project. And what you see before you, and I'd love to invite up both Ken and Dr. Karen to speak to the design and what they're trying to do. Uh, what you see here is the schematic drawing that they provided to show what they're hoping to create with the revitalization grant funds.
Um, before we call them up, does anyone have any questions of staff?
Yeah, I, I do. Have we given more than fifteen thousand to any other applicant?
All other applicants have been on single tax lots.
Yeah, I, I, I realize that. I'm just, yeah, wondering if we have.
Uh, we have given up to fifteen thousand to Gather has been our only applicant so far.
Okay. Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. Great. Okay, so let's hear from names again, sorry.
Yeah, we will have Ken and Dr. Karen here.
Ken and Dr. Karen, if you'd like to come up and speak to us.
If you don't mind, we are gonna hand you a microphone because this is how folks online get to hear you.
Um, so everyone is for considering the application. Um, so with the Almeida fires, it really devastated all of our landscaping and almost destroyed the building. We were quite lucky because it really, the fire surrounded the building two hundred and seventy degrees. And there was damage to the building, but, you know, we were just newly renovated the building, so thank God that survived. So, but it did pretty much destroy all of the, um, irrigation and all of the landscaping. So, which includes the two tax lots. So I know it's an unusual request for two tax lots, tax slots. But what we really wanna do with this is also promote the dreaming of, of, uh, talent. So we have a whole area which we didn't put in our plan. I realized there's a whole sort of, and it used to be the Umpoldumpa Bank, so it had a drive-through. So part of that drive-through is still asphalt. So with this grant, we wanna remove the asphalt. Put in, you know, again, we were the first bee-friendly business in talent. So, and we have not used an iota of any kind of, uh, uh, artificial chemicals to, in this landscape. So we really wanna be an example to the community for a business that, um, does bee-friendly, you know, organic, drought-resistant, fire-resistant, local plants. We've been putting some medicinal plants in there. And, um, we have tried to do it on our own system, Almeida fire, and it just does not happen. So we really like this assistance. And quite honestly, the forty thousand, um, is not even the whole thing. We're gonna spend more than that. And if we don't really get significant assistance, um, it's gonna, you know, we'll redo the irrigation in a little bit, you know? Years, yeah. And it's already been years. Do you wanna add to that, Ken and all?
Can we add to it?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I know the, our sign was destroyed. It had the refurbishment and everything. And then, and like you said, all the irrigation on both, uh, the new street side and on Highway ninety-nine, uh, was also destroyed. So it's a lot of irrigation. Luckily, the backflow is still there and it's still intact. Um, so that's good. Um, the only thing I think we have left is the, what, one cedar tree?
Pretty much. That actually stopped the fire. It's a great story.
Uh, which is on the new street side, but, uh, but yeah, taking out the, the rest of the asphalt. And, uh, I think that the design is really, really good and eye-catching. Um, it's a long, we have a long lot that is actually right here on, I, I'm, it's, uh, also gonna talk to Mike up now getting some, a few extra trees, um, from the leftover, I think, I believe they have, well, turn of the lines.
A beautification grant, yeah.
Yes. So a few of those trees as well, uh, to add to that. Yeah.
And so, um, you know, since the Almeida fire, we had just opened in the middle of COVID. And then the Almeida fire, so July twenty twenty, we opened. You know, September was the Almeida fire. I had colleague that actually left, um, after the Almeida fire because it was so devastating that really just couldn't deal with it. So, um, it's been a big struggle to stay alive, but we are doing it. And we are committed to talent. I mean, both of us live locally. And, um, and I would really, what I envisioned with this is it really becoming a community garden. You know what I mean? Like events, you know, we already, we did a free Almeida fire clinic. You know, we already do events for the community. And I really envision expanding that. You know, highway sound, you know, we do a little cob wall to, uh, cob wall where it's equivalent to, for the sound barrier. So it can be, uh, a real community center. And we already have people that want to do art displays there. So we, I feel like we wanna update to, to, to. Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. So, um, around the perimeter, this is a fence?
So we wanted to do, the original thought was cob wall. And then we got, um, some local people to sort of really describe to us what that meant. It, it's, um, an all-natural wall, right? Made cob, COB. Yeah, so, yeah, it would be, because the sound is really prohibitive if you're gonna have any kind of events right out there. So we need something to, for the sound. And also, you know, I do a lot of pediatrics. I envision kids being able to go out there and play. And right now, it's like open access to the highway.
So would this, so it looks like it's fenced in. Would, um, if I were walking by, would I be able to just to walk in and enjoy this garden as a member of the public?
Um, right, well, part of it you could. Right, right now, pretty much anybody can walk in, right?
But we, yeah, we have this beautiful garden yet, so.
I'd want to, yeah, the building and the wall, uh, sorry, the on the wall, yep, right there, one and then
Yep.
Right there. So there's access points, actually.
Yep, that's true. There are access points. And we, and the, the, this plan is actually not a complete plan, unfortunately. The, we, the, if I, we should made a PowerPoint. So if you go to the screen, right? So that little, uh, you see where it says, um, sitting area, sort of up in the middle there. Yeah, so there's a box while plants, that's gonna go. So that was a wall of beautiful, um, Italian, uh, typeless trees, which are very flammable. And completely went up in flames. So now there's nothing. Um, we had a dent for the building. That was the closest part. Touch the building.
And is that, is that ninety-nine at the top?
No, that's New Street, ninety-nine.
New Street.
Yeah, that's ninety-nine. So what we did is that top, the plan is to go all the way out to that, uh, Theodore Cedar Tree. So this is actually a partial plan. So it extends much further in, almost to Asante, that, you know, so Asante is their clinic across the way. So we have a much, this plan actually includes that.
So, so that would be trees shading the sidewalk?
Uh, that would be, uh, you know, like around the track, train tracks. I live on Front Street. So the train tracks have all like greenery right there. It's gonna be similar idea. It's greenery all up and down. Now it's just for, you know, we took out the roots. We've done a lot of work to clean up, you know, so it doesn't look like the post-fire, you know, a hot spot. But, um, yeah, there's nothing really there at all.
So I'm just looking at the, you know, the majority, I'm really drawn to that beautiful garden right there in the middle of the swirly paths. Now, my understanding from reading the application that that would be for clientele.
That would be for, it's, well, again, we're community-based, right? This is the goal. So it's not just for patients. The goal is to have art shows there, uh, music, like cloudis, local flowers, like this beautiful bamboo. So that would be for beyond just, you know, patients that come into the front. And that, you know, we already have, um, you know, meetings at night for twelve-step programs. You know, this is not just the patients. But really, the vision of this is a community-based thing. Because we've had such a, like, start because of all the economic situations, right, it's plain. It, it hasn't been up and running as much as I want, but.
So you would be hosting events for the community?
Oh, yeah.
As a, as a practice.
Yes, we already are, but it's been really limited.
Yeah.
So, uh, we, I envision expanding that. Yeah, it's a beautiful space. If any of you guys have not been in there, you are welcome to come in. So we spent a lot of money renovating it. It's big, open space. And I teach, so I, uh, a lot. So that's why they usually why we left it open. Um, and you have the children's corner. It's, it's really, um, purposely left wide open for multiple who's, you know, I'm just awaiting, and it's a lot bigger than a waiting room. So they, we can, you know, we have seating for people.
Yeah, but I, I guess, um, trying not to belabor the point, but the thing is, this is, this is a private space that, that you're saying that you would host community events there, but it's not, but there's no public access.
To the gardens there are. No. Yeah, you see, right?
I guess I'm not.
Point at, so that, see that walkway right next to the building? Right there. That's open to the public. And people do walk through there. They do.
And they, and so if I were walking by there, I'd feel free to just walk in that garden and, and not like I'm trespassing on your.
No, it's like some, be enjoyed, you know, like, I think that boy, I had a great mentor, you know, the one of reasons why I moved to talent organization is Dr. Jim Jelas, who's passed away. But he lived here in talent, so I moved here and we were just close friends. And, uh, he was my teacher. And, um, there's no such thing as a five. It's always weak. So this is not for me. It's not for Ken. It's not to make more money because we're not leading me. If I wanted to make more money, I have a lot of other ways I could do that. It's about serving the community. It's about being service. This is the hugest thing I've learned. And that's the joy of what I do. And that's why I'm here, you know, obviously, the, our money's other place, but I love it here. And I wanna contribute. Um, and it's been struggling. So make it this way, we'd get the project. And believe you me, you're spending a lot of the business money. This is not my whole project. This is, we're gonna be all contributing significant amounts. So, and I encourage you guys to come in and take a look around, you know? We're committed.
Thank you, Karen. Dr. Karen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I see a hand up though, so.
Member buyers? Um, yeah, can you point out where you would be removing the asphalt?
Um, it's so like, oh, there, so i- in this, it's already removed, right? So if you point up, right, okay, so keep on going to screen left. Screen left. There, right there, right now, there's a whole entrance way that's asphalt. Right? That, like, half of that is asphalt.
Asphalt and curb.
Yep.
So the curb and the asphalt will be removed. And then, uh, filled.
Yep. So, and, yeah, because that, it gets hot in that corner there. So it would be nice to put green as opposed to asphalt. And, uh, yeah.
Follow-up question. Um, is there any sort of plan since it's a beautiful intention with what you're doing with that outdoor space? Is there any sort of plan to have any sort of signage that indicates to people they're welcome to use that space as they're just walking by?
I think that's a good idea. Yeah, I wouldn't, you know, it would be the, you know, my mentor died, I thought of putting a little, um, because it's internationally known and putting like a little memorial there. So, and the idea was to be like a quiet space for people to contemplate. So, um, I think that would be the ultimate goal is to have that for a place for people to just sit and be peaceful and just, uh, enjoying a beautiful town, you know? So I think that's a good idea.
I, like, what comes to mind is the, um, right beside Trinity Episcopal and Ashland, right beside Trinity Episcopal Church in Ashland where they've got the
Yeah.
The, um, labyrinth. And there's a, a beautiful sign right at the front that indicates it's a space for contemplation that's open to everyone between like sunrise and sunset. You know, like, it's clearly stated, open to everyone, and here's its purpose. Yeah.
Um, thank you, you guys.
Yeah.
Um, because I think that's a great idea. Because it's, um, you need that. Here, I think.
Member Panamara?
I'll just say there's another example in Ashland. I don't know if it's public or a private park, but it's like right outside the, uh, like the blue draft is there. And there's, anyway, it's just a really pretty real space. It, it looks like it's a business park, but it belongs to the, I don't know for sure. Yeah. But the point is, is like benches and everything, um, it's, it looks open.
Yeah.
And, you know, my concern, and I think that was a really great suggestion about signage, is this looks proper.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and I, I would, I would be shy about, yeah. Um, I was wondering maybe in, at some point in the wall there, and, and this is just a, just an idea, um, that there could be like an arch or something that would, you know, kind of look like, you know, with the signage or just an opening that kind of indicated, you know, this is a med- place for quiet meditation. You know, you're welcome to, to walk in, uh, just some, something that, uh, people wouldn't be shy about, um, enjoying it.
Yeah, good idea. And what, and one of the things that we're, our, our Christian, right, the shooting star, which there, that was really great. Spot. She was suggesting, you know, to put seating along the way. So in one way, we could put seating on both sides, you know? We'll see, you know, this is all budgeting. That's at the start. But, you know, really, along the edges, we really, she suggested, I mean, especially cob wall, wooden seating with flats in the back. You know, so that might be an update, um, because cob walls, uh, really work intensive and it's not a lot of people qualified to do it. So, um, that would be an update of grade, but seating. So it makes it more invited, more inviting because it's like a seating for people to sit and look toward the center. And we seating, please people will just sit and look over the center, and we would, we'll also have seating in the middle. There's a patio there, that's already there. But we could a lot more into that, but, you know, recovering from the Almeida fire and the sign, everything was just so destroyed, but we are still standing. Great.
Thank you both so much, any other questions?
I, I just want to say, it's a beautiful vision, I loved it when I saw it, it's a really beautiful vision, it's just the concern about people feeling naked and useless.
Yeah, that, I mean, what's nice about this, and that's why, because I should be on Zoom, and sorry Zoom people, I'm not a great Zoom person. Because, um, you know, you can see people's faces, and this can be ideas and inspiration, because it's been a rough road, so inspiration is nice. So thank you, thanks for considering it. Yeah, anything else, Tim, if you wanna add? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, you can just write in.
So, Jordan, the guide, the guidelines say, one application per lot, or one application per business?
It's a per lot that we are granting.
A lot.
It's not applications, but it's total award amount, so up to fifteen thousand dollars per lot.
I guess what gives me pause is just the fairness to other businesses that maybe perhaps are not on multiple lots. Um, you folks have other thoughts, feelings, um, member buyers?
If there is some revision to the plan, and there's some additional clarity included in the plan that is incorporating clear indications that this space is for public use, I am okay with it, because then our whole community is benefiting from that. And it, it's accomplishing a, a bunch of goals I know we have about, like, greenness along ninety-nine, and revitalizing that whole corridor and that sort of thing, so, I'm more inclined to support it if it's, we get a, a new draft of the plan that says, that incorporates some sort of clarity of opening for public access, signage indicating how public use is intended and welcome, that sort of thing. Member Penomra?
Yeah, I'll just say, um, I'm also looking for that, I'm, I'm still, I'm still feeling that the, the intention, however it was worded, because tax lots can be a precise, that's kind of arbitrary, I think the intention was kind of for business. Um, and I'm not really, you know, since we're almost out of money, um, I think I'd be much more comfortable with something fifteen thousand dollars, uh, or under, and up to fifty thousand would depend on the ability of the public to, to feel like, you know, um, that they, that they have some access to it, although there's, you know, there's nothing we can, you know, this is private land, we can't really insist on anything like that. Um, but I, I don't think we'd wanna make it a contractual or anything, and I, I don't even know what, since it's a grant. Um, so it might just be, you know, here for initial, um, you know, maybe come back, uh, depending.
Um, so Jordan, we have eighty-five thousand that's currently in there still, since Gather's award already went through?
Yes, so we have eighty-five thousand budgeted that has not yet been allocated.
Mm-hmm.
And it's always up to the board's, uh, purview, if they want to put more money into that line item.
Okay.
Uh, part with the year.
And I guess the only other thing, we don't know that there aren't still people who are coming up with applications, that maybe just haven't gotten them in yet.
Um, that could be, um, we received one application, uh, as of last meeting, and this meeting will have received five additional.
Okay. Uh, member buyers?
Um, can you please remind me where the funding is coming from, do we need to spend it by a specific time?
This is Tura funds.
So are we, because we're, again, in the tail end of this Tura lifecycle, are we under any obligation to spend money by any certain time?
Um, Tura continuing to exist as long as there's money in the bank account, we're no longer bringing in revenue. So what, any money we use is not, you know, money that, that we expect to replenish.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I will emphasize that this revitalization grant program was made, uh, directly to the Tura mission, which is to support local businesses in our Tura area, and that was the basis of why this grant was created.
You want to finish your thought?
If it, if it's just a follow-up, I'm curious if you know of any other businesses right now that are currently working on applications?
I have not been contacted by any additionals, the only folks that reached out have submitted applications already.
I will also just say, though, that I think that Bonnie Morgan plans to turn one in, I thought that she had, but she may not have, from Almgren.
One final question, I'm pleased with that, didn't we have a deadline connected to this grant application?
We do not.
Okay, great, excellent.
Member Penomra?
So, um, there wasn't a lot of, uh, I think people weren't really aware of it before, but was it, uh, the Talent Business Alliance that started to advertise?
Yes.
Then what was the timeframe on that one, did TBA start advertising?
So the Business Alliance started advertising, I wanna say in June, early June. Um, and so application materials are hosted on the website, outreach has been done, but could certainly be done again. Um, and I think that, you know, folks are always busy, it's summer. I wouldn't be surprised if a few other folks had applications in, or working on putting them in, um, but that I don't know, all I know about is, um, Bonnie Morgan.
Which?
Member buyers?
Doing the math right now, should Bonnie Morgan apply for the full fifteen thousand dollars with a plan that could be funded? Fully, we wouldn't have enough left to award the full fifteen thousand dollars, would we? If we fully funded all of these plans?
Um, so Tura, so the board decided to allocate a hundred thousand dollars to our grant programs for this coming fiscal year. We have additional funds available and other line items that can be re-appropriated to this revitalization grant, if the board finds that more funding is beneficial for helping meet goals. Um, currently, we have eighty-five thousand that have not been distributed, all of these grants are up to amounts, so as projects actually complete and final totals come in, if not the full grant award has been spent, it'll go back into the pot.
Member Penomra?
Um, the Gateway Project, in the next, uh, we're developing an RFP, or working towards developing an RFP, and then it'll be, Tura will be the body that will continue, uh, to try to develop the gateway site.
Currently, as in Tura, the work plan to develop the gateway site, the Tura Board could at any time choose to, uh, pass that project onto the city.
Okay, right, so it's, it's not like we don't have things to spend the money on.
Yes, so we have a, a large chunk of money also in property acquisition, um, but is in the same class of funds as this grant program as well. So there are, um, we currently have about one point two million in the bank total that's spendable for Tura. That is not including the loan that we owe, um, which is an additional seven hundred and twenty thousand.
So that's, yeah.
Separate from the one point two million.
That, that won't come out of the, no, it will not come out of the one point two.
That is not counting them, yeah.
Yeah, and I, sorry, I was just gonna just finish the thought, I mean, the idea of Tura doing some land acquisition or something like that, who always been, um, the idea, the fact that it's not, we don't have future revenue, um, you know, restricts what we're able to do, but I don't think it's a, a situation where we're just trying to get rid of money.
Where's your mic?
Huh?
Where's your mic? Do you have your mic on?
Oh.
Sorry.
Whoops.
You were just saying so many brilliant things, I was hoping the audience could hear you.
Sorry.
There you go.
I think I'm making all this noise, I'll just hold it.
That's okay, do you need help?
Yeah, maybe, I don't care.
You're so slow. Um, Jordan? How much was Gather's full application? I know they asked for fifteen, but how much was their project full cost, do you remember?
Fifteen thousand eight hundred.
Fifteen?
Uh, fifteen thousand eight hundred was their full project cost.
Okay.
And we granted them the up to fifteen thousand max award.
Thank you, I'm remembering all the numbers.
Of course.
I'm learning, Council Greider has thoughts?
I don't want to put her on the spot, Counselor Greider, or sorry, Board Member Greider, feel free to jump in and raise your hand if you have thoughts.
Is she able to, is she panelists? She's with us.
I'm here, sorry, um, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement, um, I, I think this is good conversation, I, I also was, you guys were, was wondering if there was any deadline put on this grant, but hearing that there's not, um, yeah, um, I'm just, I think, I, I, I'm, 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 I'm in, I'm in agreement, I'm following the, the conversation, I, I don't think I have answers or suggestions, but, um, yeah.
Thank you, Board Member Greider. Member Penomra, are, you know, before we make a motion, are we able to, um, make any, um, contingencies, uh, for this grant? It seems like that it wouldn't hold up.
Right, you know, I would recommend not making contingencies on this grant specific, you know, come, if council, sorry, the board, I mean, city council mode, if the board is uncomfortable awarding, you know, the up to thirty thousand dollar amount, given that it's on two tax lots, I recommend rewarding up to fifteen thousand max for one tax lot amount. And then, um, asking the Apple to come and just make a, uh, request for Tura funds to separate from this grant program to help, uh, complete their project. Uh, making it separate from this grant itself.
Member buyers?
Um, can you please remind me, I've been looking at various grant guidelines all day, so they're all blending. Um, is this grant available to a new business, or an incoming business that might be relocating here? And is it limited to brick and mortar businesses, or can something like a food truck apply to this grant?
Um, complicated is the best answer, this is a facade program, so there does need to be a frontage that's being improved. It cannot be used for internal improvements if anything, the food truck could apply for it, but it has to be within Tura's boundary, and it has to stay with the property, not the food truck.
And can an incoming business apply for this, if it's within Tura's boundary?
An incoming business can apply for it if they have property owner approval, and if the improvements will stick to the property rather than the business.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I will say, Commissioner Greider has their hand up as well.
Board Member Greider?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, based on what Jordan just, um, mentioned or recommended, I would, I would be in favor, definitely, um, approving the full fifteen thousand, um, the one, you know, under the one lot, um, I feel, I love the ideas and the conversations around, um, having public access and signage for that, I, 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 I think Counselor, um, Commissioner Penomra mentioned, um, is that something that can be, I, I mean, because it's private property, I, I don't know, I guess I would just wanna give the business a little more time to, to think about that, um, I think it sounds great, uh, but I don't wanna, you know, put them on the spot here to commit to that, um, it sounds like, give them some time, um, but I would be in favor of the, the fifteen thousand today, for sure.
Thank you, Board Member Greider.
And, uh, one last one I'd like to make, just towards Board Member Greider's comment, you know, this, the revitalization grant is the goal to support the business, rather than to build public spaces. So all the other grants that we are awarding is for use on private property that benefits that specific business. Um, and that is the reason why I'm not recommending placing contingencies of a common grant program for one specific business, just to stick to the nature of, uh, the program.
Uh, member Penomra?
But I, I just to expand on that a little bit, the idea is the facade and what people see, right, from the street.
You know, the, the way we wrote the grant, so typical facade programs is, yes, to do an economic driver, to make people more attracted to come to our town, and more attracted to a, go to a specific business, that's the typical definition of facade grants. We have, uh, written it to be a little broader, in the terms of kind of improving any visible aspect, but also helping recover from Almeida fire. That was a really big, important thing for the board, at the time we designed this grant, is to really focus in on Almeida fire impact and recovery, um, which is not typical of the facade programs typically seen elsewhere.
Are we ready for a motion? Member Penomra?
I move to award, um, osteopathic, uh, healthcare, uh, fifteen thousand dollar grant.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to award osteopathic healthcare a fifteen thousand dollar grant, discussion?
I, I just wanna say that, um, I, I think it's a beautiful concept, and if, uh, the applicant wants to come back and talk to Tura later, as the, the plans get, uh, more refined, um, I would definitely be open to, to hearing about that, and, um, I, I love the vision. But I, I just wanna say, this is public money, so, um, I think that's, that's where, uh, that's where I'm coming from, seeing the limitation.
If there's no further discussion, we can move to a vote, should we do a roll call?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay.
Um, the director kind of said, are we recording this right now? We are, okay, perfect, um, just make sure, because I'm not taking notes today. Um, okay, so we have a motion in a second to award up to fifteen thousand dollars to osteopathic healthcare. Um, member, Parey Miller? Yes, member buyers? Yes, member Penomra?
Yes.
And member Greider?
Yes.
Great, motion carries, Chair.
Thank you, Jordan. And thank you so much for both of you being here and speaking about your project. Okay, so the next applicant is the Talent Club.
Wait, this is the Talent Club, they were not able to attend, uh, tonight, they just got back from vacation, um, and weren't able to make the meeting. Talent Club is requesting a grant, um, to construct a new patio area where their current patio is now, so they've removed the concrete for a new level concrete, put in a four-foot fence and planter boxes, and to purchase and hang three shade sails over that space. Um, staff recommendation on this one is to, I'm gonna double check, uh, award the full fifteen thousand amount, even though their specific request was for thirteen thousand five hundred sixty-one.
Questions for staff?
Do you happen to have a map of where they're doing the patio area?
I don't have a visual, it's right where their current patio is.
Are they expanding that footprint at all?
They're not able to, it's already maxed out for the property lines to the Talent Club.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Uh, member buyers?
Is the fence line changing at all, is it?
Yes, so it'll be a four-foot fence, and right now it's pallets, um, so it will be a wood fence. We have asked, right now, it's attached to one of our historic light posts, so we've asked them to not have it attached, because it is just a, a concern on, on the light post. Um, but I've not seen the actual design, if the fence is changing line or location.
Hmm, yeah, I would be really curious to see if they're fencing beyond a little bit, so that as, um, so seating can perhaps extend a little further, or clientele can come in and out with less likelihood of walking off the premises, with an opening contained.
Um, Jordan, I know they just painted.
Yes.
Did Candace talk about, I, I don't know if we ever came up with an, with any kind of idea about retro actively using this grant to help folks with things they've already done? Is that why they came up with this project specifically, do you know?
Yes, uh, I know, uh, Candace was considering applying just to get some money back for having the paint job that she done, but she decided that she would prefer to do a full, uh, refresh of the outdoors, and so she's applying for this specific patio project. Um, Talent Club did have to spend, I believe it was around twenty-seven thousand to paint, um.
Looks great.
It does, it looks fabulous. Um, and then really quick, can you just refresh my memory, I think you said at the beginning, that the staff recommendation on this is higher than the requested amount because of potential I think you said at the beginning that the staff recommendation on this is higher than the requested amount because of potential permits and fees.
Potential permit and just to have a little flexibility when it comes to implementing a project.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Member Panamara?
The Talent Club, $15,000 grant.
Second. I have a motion in a second to award the Talent Club a $15,000 grant.
Great. Roll call, ready?
Discussion?
And we can, I thought that we can go by consensus on these.
Okay.
These are not resolutions, pardon me.
Okay. Member Byers?
It's more of a comment, but I, I would say, man, I really hope that the Talent Club would look at having a mural on that fence as well. Not like art pops planned for such, for a community full of artists, but a great canvas, but it's becoming available.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no further comments or discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Jordan. Okay, next application is from Art Bob Beer Co. And I believe we have Kimber in the Zoom audience.
Hey Hector, can we bring Kimber forward as a panelist, please? I'll give us all of Kimber's thunder. I'll do a quick summary that Art Bob is looking to install a mural as well as do a patio refresh with new gravel, new bark chips, and then a, a new laser engraved wood sign for their business. And with that, Kimber, I'll let you give all the better, better details.
Kimber, are you?
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Hi Kimber.
Can you hear me?
Hear you, yes.
Okay, great. So pretty much everything that you see there in the diagram will cover the requests for the grant. We have Tark Raghav going to build six, six foot panels out of marine plywood, which is very light and capable of attaching to the wrought iron fence, which we think would bring a lot more joy to the community as an art community. And then also business, people will be able to see that we're there and that fun things are happening. The mural theme is combining industrial with natural and this sort of spiral feel, which is brewing is actually an industrial zoning. It's an industrial job and the building is an old auto garage, so kind of cogs and things like that. Bringing that to our motto, which is to bring color to the world through the production of our craft, which is the, the brewery side of things. Someone did run over my sign for the second time and I handcrafted both of those. So I have released a little bit of that stress by contacting Naughty Rose, who recently did our flight boards. And she is willing to build us a new folding sign, which follows in like the dimensions and everything with the sign that we've already permitted. And that's called, the branding that you see there will actually be engraved, laser engraved. So it's going to be like a dark wood and then the sign itself, the two beers is going to be 3D enlaid and then I'm going to paint it. So I'll still have a little bit of craft in, but it won't be so stressful on me with the woodworking skills. And then I threw that in at the last minute, thank goodness, Jordan allowed me to bring that to you today. And then lastly, the front of the building used to be bark chips. It's pretty well come, like composted in now. And then there is, as you can see, next to the left of the sidewalk, more gravel, a quarter inch gravel. That's really good for dogs. We are dog friendly and we, the community say every time they walk their dog by, they're always pulling them in. So be easier on the dog paws and just look a lot nicer defined six foot path next to the paver path, which is six foot to the left there. And that would be going back and we're using plant organ for that. So that, that's where the quote comes from with that. And yeah, I think that's, that's all we're looking to do is to improve the facade. Because we opened in the middle of the pandemic when everything was shut down and to go. So we had to do, to go kind of taste and growler fill all the way through, you know, being 500 feet from a burn scar. A lot of people didn't know if we were still there, you know, didn't want to travel. So a typical brewery grand opening looks a lot different than the one that we had, which was supposed to support that art program that Art Bob has inside, but we wanted to do bigger and better things for the community. And, and we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed that this grant will get us there and will bring lots of joy through color and, and mystique and charm and that kind of thing.
Thank you, Kimber.
That's all. Yes.
What is the cost of the sign? Do we know?
It was, Kimber sent me a quote, 450. And so Kimber's total request, including sign is for 9,000. I am recommending 10,000 once again, just to build in a buffer.
Thank you.
I realized, yeah, the sign quote, I didn't have my end on it with the paint. So I appreciate the staff recommendation because I, I guess, I mean, I absolutely think you're right. There's going to be things that come up that we don't realize. I don't know if I'm a special request or if this is normal. I think in the grant, it said that we could do it advanced before reimbursement. And so you may see that in your packet too. We, you know, we're mom and pop, just Dave and I there. And it's, you know, a weekend warrior kind of situation with our small area. We cannot be open for all seven days a week because we brew in the space that we are open to the public. So, you know, we're not, we don't have bukues of extra funding for these kinds of things. And so I was hoping to get it a half advance for the artists. They said that they could get to work on that right away. And the landscaping and then once the final project is completed, we'll be able to, to pay them and get the reimbursement.
Thank you, Kimber.
I think if that's how it's, yes.
And that would be, that type of work will be stuff that you work directly with the city staff in community development? On?
Yes, we've been, we've gotten approval on everything through community development. And, and the panels went through architectural review and got approved. So, and then we were told that due to its nature being on the wrought iron fence, that it doesn't need much more permitting. So that should, that should cover everything as far as getting going.
Wonderful. Member Byers?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is a really vibrant addition to the town. I'm curious, what made you lean towards a fixing something to a fence as opposed to doing a mural on the wall of the building that's facing the street?
Um, I guess mostly the panels are easier for the artists to work on as a project and install versus being inside of like our wild, wild flower garden and being able to get inside of there and work from there with scaffolding and things. This seems like a much easier and much quicker accomplishment. And, and as far as the space goes. It would also be more effective, I think, because you can see it as you're going by versus like having to look inward.
Member Panamara?
Yeah, this is actually just more of a comment. You mentioned that you were going to be using bark chips as well as gravel.
The bark chips was just a refresher. There's already bark chips there. I don't, you know, we can use anything.
So I, I am definitely no expert on fire wise, but I saw a video at the Ashland Fire Department on their website. And they talk about fire wise where they do some experiments with bark chips and how those can carry embers on the wind in, in the case of a fire. So I was, it made me very nervous about bark chips. But anyway, I've just, I just recommend that you talk to, not me, but somebody who actually knows something about, about fire wise to make sure those are, those are good decisions that are being made. Those materials, I'll, I might send you a link to the, it's like a five minute video, but it kind of gave me a little bit of pause, so. Just to.
Yeah, for sure. And honestly, the bark chip decision came from the landlord, down from the landlord. That's what was already there. And so I don't, I don't foresee a problem going back to him and saying, you know, let's use a different material. I, I just spoke with the landlord and then plant organ and those were the two, the two, how the plan came about essentially. But I would be more than happy to do compost or anything else, just to make it look nicer than it already is, obviously would be.
Yeah, I think.
The goal of Tura and the goal of Art Bob.
Yeah, the, the fear was for kind of the larger chips would just carry embers like really, really far. The, the thing that the composty kind that's practically dirt, that's fine. So anyway, I'll.
Okay, sounds good. I can easily.
Any other questions? Member Byers?
I like, I love this mural and I'm looking at it and my thought is because it's on a panel, a series of panels. If something to fix like that, it can be removed. And I, I would love to know how we could ensure that this mural that we're paying for with the public funds and improving facade of the building, how we can ensure that it's pretty permanently, permanently affixed.
I think that it also, we have to think about the difference between like a business wanting to do something and then potentially, you know, like the property owner. And so, you know, what that means for all of the permissions that have to get, you know, flushed out through that process. But yes, I mean, they're beautiful and I hope that they're there forever.
I know, me too. I, I like. Something I, it's just, you know, like.
We have no intention of moving them, you know, I, I want to stay in that building forever. And I want that to be there forever as well. I don't, you know, I, I explained the, everything to the landlord and he was on board. So I don't foresee him ever removing them. But, you know, I also can't speak for the, for the speculative future with the, the land, the property owner as well. But he was under the understanding that it's, it is owned by the city and was okay with that.
Well, that's reassuring. Thank you, Kimber.
Any questions, further questions for Kimber? Thank you for being with us, Kimber.
Yeah, it's my pleasure. Thank you for all that you're doing to revitalize our, our town.
Are we ready for a motion? Member Panamara?
I move to award a $10,000 grant to Art Bob Beer.
Second. I have a motion in a second to award $10,000 grant to Art Bob Beer Co. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion passes.
Yay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Kimber. And just to let all, just to know, I will be following up in the next few days, just the next steps for getting the contract together to make sure we can move projects forward.
Thank you, Jordan. Okay, next up, we have biscuits and vinyl and I see Matt is here with us in the Zoom room.
Hector, can we bring Matt forward, please?
Welcome, Matt.
Hello.
Hello, Matt.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thanks for having me.
Tell us about your sign.
It's just a simple sign to replace the tarp that I've had up there since I reopened. It's just a nice, simple design with my logo and I think it'll look nicer than what's there now.
Wonderful. Any questions for Matt?
I will share, this one is a $1,500 ask. I'm asking for council to do 2,000 or for the board to do 2,000 just for permitting costs, incidentals, et cetera.
Member Byers?
I move to approve the staff approved amount of $2,000 for the biscuits and vinyl grant proposal.
I have a motion in a second to approve $2,000 for biscuits and vinyl grant. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Yay.
Motion passes. Thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you. This is really cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, next we have Sweet Beat Station.
Perfect. I'd love to welcome up Anna Byers, the owner of Sweet Beat Station.
Anna Zegstron.
Oh God, sorry. I was looking at her on a section.
That counts. I think it's yours now.
Hello, Anna. Thank you for being here and for being so patient.
We'll send Hector up.
It doesn't sound on.
Say one more thing. One more sound, Kay.
One more sound.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so thank you for all of this very detailed information. Would you like to speak a little bit about your project?
I can answer any question, though it's multifaceted. Application of the biggest act is for the shed. So right now there are metal bike boxes. So this is the EVO building, first station located. So there's bike boxes there that are going to forever remember the location. They can be found, keep open them up. They're pretty scary, inspired, etc. The boxes themselves are at angles. They can fit four bikes full. They've never been used all around either. So the goal is to remove the boxes as permission from the main town. And then put a shed there. So the Tim Burton shed, the door facing the EVO building. And we want to also follow fence around it so that we can hide the trash and recycle. Right now, people tend to use our fence all the time after hours and we'll give a good stage for that. So it'd be nice to have in a fence on that space. So there is a handicap parking spot on the far side of that. And that's going to be, we have to do a two foot setback from that. I refer to architectural review. So then it would be the fence surrounding it there with access gate on the side looking for the city hall. And then the shed itself would be worth for the EVO building. And then replacing there currently two bike racks in that space just for high and other bikes. But you can fit four bikes. We wanted to get our nine back by the rack. Who has coming folks at five to the station? So that's part one of the proposal. There's also shade structure as well with the sun shade along the existing fence line. So though this image right there backwards does show the EVO building. So though this image right there backwards does show the depot building and it's in the middle. It just has eight foot overhang on top of it and then uh further back it's the same fence line. So what we want to do is every other post that exists, you write a six inch by six inch post. Uh like place the current post there so that it can. It'll be some creepy in the ground with a twelve inch uh concrete pore.
But then so it's super, super sturdy. Then the ten feet above the ground and with eye hooks attached to the top of those. And then to the roof of the building where sunshine will be along that existing fence line. We also want to do some trellising so that in the front of the. Fence line on the guest side of the fence, on the crank side, there are these really cool planters that are also in the bin. Uh that are metal, that go to a human building that we want to plant uh different. Fine growing plants like the Syria can. Add more green and then eventually phase out the sun shade if we can get enough of the growth uh to grow. Um in the ask as well, there is uh some. Menu boards to hold our menu on the outside of the door. We are getting pretty tight in the ass, so I'm gonna. But there are two there um and some fire pit tables and those are actual people that you can sit at instead of like a classic fire. Cable that is low, so it'd be much more comfortable and it includes. Wind protectors so that people don't hurt the plates. What's also nice about these tables, the propane that's directly below it, no cords or anything. And you know what I'm at on this is this is a city building um and in this district, we did have this go through architectural review committee. To approve the plans. So that has been cleared by Art.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Member Panamera?
So how soon are you gonna do this? Like before the end of the summer?
Oh, oh, cool. Yeah. And I will say this timing works really well because we just finalized our last quote for painting the depot building as well. So it'll be a really nice refresh um all around.
Member buyers?
This isn't a question, it's pointing something out that's just occurring to me if I'm looking this um looking at this. I know that the air conditioning in the depot often struggles keeping up with current use. And looking at this, this will really help reduce some of that really strong afternoon sun from hitting the building, which also is a great thing. For us as we're trying to, you know, make more sustainable choices in general with city property, I think.
One thing I did not include on this ask, but I did purchase because I wanted to get it done is windows tinting. While I couldn't know that actually followed the. The gates about seventy five percent. We're gonna need to evolve, that's not included, so yeah, I think it's hot. And it would be really nice to just cool that entire stretch about fifteen degrees.
Reducing.
Member buyers?
Continuing with my thought, if we're like actively reducing um I hate. Sink with this plan, which is exciting.
Any other questions? Thank you, Anna, for being here.
Thank you very much for considering.
Okay, graphs and charts. Thank you. Um any discussion? I will take a motion at any time.
Fifteen thousand's recommendation for this one.
Yeah, um uh I move to award uh fifteen thousand, almost said millions. Thousand dollar grant to Sweet Beat.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to award a fifteen thousand dollar grant to Sweet Beat Station. If there's no discussion, um all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? None. The motion passes. Thank you, Jordan, for all of that information and thank you again, everyone, for being here to tell us about your projects. Okay. The next item on the agenda is item four point two, discussion on meeting time change. Staff report?
Yes. Um so thank you to our board. You all changed your typical meeting time to be Tuesdays at six P M. Um largely because of my capacity and staff's capacity to prepare for little city council and urban renewal. At a time where we had a lot of urban renewal work going on. Um that workload has decreased. Um also recognizing that since someone else will be sitting in the urban renewal and city manager executive chair. Um it would be likely much easier for them if we were to move urban renewal meetings to the hour before city council meetings. Um and a couple of board members have mentioned that it would be better for their schedules as well that would enable them to attend in person. Uh so I am submitting a recommendation to the board to shift meetings starting in September to the third Wednesday of the month. At five forty five P M.
Okay, the staff report did say the second Wednesday, so that was gonna be one of my questions. That's fine. That makes a lot more. Um. Member Panamera?
Well, to me, I thought that was brilliant. It's gonna be like Wednesdays are for town. I feature my big council, but Wednesdays are. I thought that was making it a lot easier.
Isn't there a commission meeting that day?
Parts you guys would never get.
So the third Wednesday.
I apologize. I strongly meant to say the second city council meeting of the month, which is the third Monday, third Wednesday.
Okay. Third Wednesday at five forty five. Uh member buyers? Oh, wow. Very fast. Hold on.
I wanna discuss.
Member Panamera?
I'm just wondering, um this has been pure study sessions.
I think during the interim period likely, um but once a permanency manager is in place, uh can adapt schedule as needed.
Very good.
And we are in person now.
Correct.
Okay.
In person with a hybrid uh option.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Member buyers?
I move to schedule regular board meetings at five forty five P M on the second Wednesday of the month.
The third Wednesday.
The third Wednesday of the month.
Was that a second from board member writer?
Yes. Yes, second. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to schedule uh regular board meetings for the Urban Renewal Agency at five forty five P M. On the third Wednesday of the month. Any discussion? Will board member Panamera be able to adjust?
No, I love my study sessions. I have to get, as long as I get a study session at least once a month. Had to get my things.
Okay, we'll still have lots of study sessions. Okay, if that is all, um all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? None. The motion carries. Thank you, Jordan. Item number four point three is discussion on interim executive director. Staff report?
Yes, uh so as the board is aware of, I am having my last day, September seventh. Uh both the city manager as well as executive director of urban renewal. So I just wanted to formally discuss this with you all as a board um of what you all would like to do after my absence. My recommendation is to have the interim city manager also fill the interim executive director role for urban renewal. Um but then I do recommend likely in January, when we have a permanent member in the seat, to consider hiring a separate executive director. Um particularly if the gateway project is gonna ramp up in the R F P, that'll be a significant endeavor. And would uh probably be helpful for new city manager to have someone else focusing on it. Um but for now, I I do recommend uh assigning the interim urban renewal as well.
Thank you, Jordan.
Yeah.
Questions for staff? Member Panamera?
Yeah, I'm I'm just wondering, is this something, it's it's kind of funny because. We're the same people, but you know, the board um saying calling dibs on the city manager, is that something that the council needs to agree to? Or?
You know, I would say uh. Since we already have an I G A with city, with the city, that allows the city manager to act as the urban renewal director unless the Tura board designates otherwise. That we do not need to have city council approval. Um and I will say city council just approved the job description for the city manager and it did include executive director services for urban renewal. Um so really what I'm looking forward to tonight is just a a formal motion to continue to have the city manager. Provide executive director services. Moving forward.
Member Panamera?
So but if the I G A is still in effect, is it is it necessary or is this just? I mean. I'm wondering if it's, when I say is this necessary, then um doesn't the I G A still remain in effect with the interim as well? Um.
Yes, I would say so. Um though the board will have to do, you know, to me, this tips the domino. That then I will start preparing the paperwork necessary to give signatory authority to the new city manager and bank access.
So it's it's about clarity and.
Okay, it's just that I'm acting in good faith.
No, 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 that's good.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Member buyers?
I move to point the interim city manager as the agency executive director.
Second, I have a motion and a second to appoint the interim city manager as the agency executive director. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? There are no people opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Jordan. Item four point four is general updates. Staff report?
Yes, my only general update to share uh are two. Uh one, the board did request regular monthly reports from Tom Humphrey, who's working on the R F P. Um Tom has been out on a motorcycle trip uh in Idaho, so he hasn't been able to prepare that. Um but we'll have discussions about continuing that once he gets back. And then my only other update is that the Tura board has officially received all of the titles and license plates today for all the travel trailers. Um so that was a really big step we've been working on for a while. So we have the titles in hand.
That's great. Thank you, Jordan.
Yeah.
Okay. Onto item five, which is items from the chair or board members. Um does anyone have anything they want to bring up? I see you looking for something to bring up. Member Panamera?
Well, this might be more of a council thing, but I just, because I'm gonna forget between now and then, I'm just. Um so I was talking to uh Fair Housing at our, the quarter, I'm on some some board that they have. And um at a quarterly meeting, there was this really great presentation. Um about uh you know, fair housing and also housing best practices and. Um and you know, discrimination and how, you know, the the state of Oregon has this legacy of discrimination. Um anyway, it's uh it's, they're offering it to like the city council and I don't know if. Um Jamie already got in touch with you about it, but I was thinking that it could be good for um. You know, council and maybe the planning commission. Anyway, it's really good, it's a really good uh presentation and I think it'd be a a light lift for staff. Just to uh you know, just to arrange an audience, um maybe as a study session or. Um just something, just something easy, because I I found it really informative.
Great. I actually have already been in contact with them to schedule a formal training. The one they formally provide is a two hour long one. Uh so maybe I'll reach back out and uh look at the options for this one. I will say I have booked out every study session moving forward until my uh expiration date. But I will put this as a recommendation for the interim city manager to place on our agenda.
That's great. Thanks for being on top of it.
Of course.
Is this the same training that Meg Tinnan did for us a couple of years ago or is it a different training?
I think it's it's. Well, so you weren't here for Meg's.
I was. Very similar. It sounds a little more robust than what Meg gave us.
Okay, great. I mean, even if it was the same, I would love to have that training again, but great. Okay, thank you. Member buyers?
I, maybe this is like totally just like a ridiculous thing to bring up, but I've been thinking so much about the council's. Uh update on safe routes to school since that was presented at the last council meeting and thinking about. At least wondering about what we could look at as Tura to support. An expansion of those efforts within the Tura boundary. And of course, I also have the same question for like various committees and commissions, but I'll keep that limited to Tura. And I would be interested to just be informed on that potential. As um I I'm speaking from personal efforts right now. I've been making a much bigger effort to walk and bike everywhere in town. Just because it's small and I can and it's really hot. So if there's anything we can be doing to just make that an easier choice for the people who live here and less of a burden for people. Who have to have that um as their mode of transportation, I would be interested in learning more about. How we can make it better for everyone.
Great. Wonderful. Member Panamera?
I just want to second that. I think that's, yeah, that's so important and whether it's. Planning or parks or council, it's just a, you know, or transportation. Um and you know, I think if it's, I, Safe Routes to School is a great source of money and there's um kind of companion grants. And it's all under the O dot umbrella, so they they know about each other and they'll steer you.
Right.
If they can't get any money, they'll steer you to another source.
Yeah, very curious about that right now.
Um I have one more thing. Uh so um A R P uh gave us the the city a grant. And I think it's September sixth or ninth, it's Wednesday, I believe the sixth, sixth. Um that there'll be one of those place making. Um we'll have a consultant come and talk to us about place making and do a walk. Uh around the city. So it's basically, I think it's just a two hour event with the walk and the place making. Um but anyway, I think that also it has a lot of overlap um with what you've been talking about.
Member buyers?
To follow on this thread, I'm curious if Tura considered applying for the twenty twenty three through twenty twenty five. Travel Oregon Competitive Grant Program that are awards between twenty thousand and a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. Uh we have not, uh you know, due to staff capacity as well as my own transition, our focus has really been on those uh three, four projects. Um that was selected at during the Tura priority setting.
I've got two of those same L O Is under my belt now. I would be happy to assist her with that. If we do want to look at some sort of, see, I as a nonprofit, we can also, of course, city talent. Because but seeking funding to support. We very much are competitively placed because we are actively one of the cities that burned. And one of the whole points right now of this specific grant cycle is supporting recovery from wildfire.
Do they grant those to municipalities?
They do.
Wow.
And nonprofits. So I'm happy to carve out some time to support the writing of that L O I, which is due the eighteenth. And the grant, which is due September fifteenth.
Okay, great, thank you. And I will share with you all, this is my last meeting executive director of Tura. So towards the big things, I will point towards uh the next person sitting in this chair. Um my main focus will be on the transition. So I think it'd be best to go from the city lens rather than Tura lens, just given capacity stock right now.
So what does that mean for September's meeting?
Yeah. So uh we will schedule it uh for the third Wednesday of the month at five forty five. Um I will have some recommended agenda items for the interim city manager, who will also be the executive director. Um to do things such as signatory authority, bank access, and then if any other grant applications come through. To make sure they're aware enough to know uh how to proceed.
Wonderful. Member Panamera?
Well, I just have a, based on this conversation about grants and stuff, so I'm wondering, is there any way? I'm wondering, is there any way that um that, you know, the city applying for a grant, if somebody else does the the legwork, like you're saying, writing it and all of that, that, I mean, how is, is there any way to make it a light lift for the city? Or is there always gonna be, is it always gonna be hard?
Um, so what we've done, and this is a, a question being asked me through my city council lens, so I want to just remind folks, this is a really good conversation to have at city council. Um, but since I have not done Tura grants, I will show you through my experience as city. Um, for example, community uh, community co-op solar. I'm saying their name wrong. They're the ones that technically wrote our prep grant for us. They've partnered with us and we're the technical writers of that grant. We then approved it and submitted it and we're partnering with them as a pass through grant uh to help get more community solar in the area. Um, so the lift, uh, we always prefer partnering with community partners who are A, experts in the area and B, at the capacity to A, apply for grant money and B, manage the project once it's awarded. Um, you know, I think the reminder for council, particularly as we go through this transition area that I would share with the city council meeting, is that you know, staff have many projects on their plate right now and to really stay focused on the priorities that were set um, when we're looking for what grant money we wanna go after.
Thanks, Jordan.
Yeah, I just thought, thanks for articulating that because, and you know, before becoming involved, um, like I hear many community members just saying, where's, we just need the money, we just need the money. And then starting to come back, no, it's about staff capacity as well. In fact, that, you know, tends to be in a small city the real constraint. And I think, you know, I'll keep asking the same question again and again until I start to kind of understand the nuances of it, because it's, it's very, it's difficult to explain. Um, but I think if, as we get better on that, people, people will um understand and um get it.
Yeah. Yeah, we are a very ambitious city, which is awesome. So I mean, we're doing good work. But remember what our top priorities are, are key to helping limit staff capacity to what we can make happen.
Do you have any last thoughts?
I will save them for when I have my city council hat on.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you, Jordan. Um, moving on, um, item number six is written communications. There are none. And item number seven is adjournment. So unless there's anything else, I will adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-six.
Well done.
Thank you, everyone. Nice job, bye, Chair.
Thank you.